Call to order, the planning board meeting of Monday, December 5th, 2022. We don't have Bob, is that correct? Are we going to have Bob?
As far as I know, we're supposed to.
Okay, well, we have four members of the planning board here this evening. Bob's not for me calling in. That puts us in between, if he calls in, we have to go to roll call, if he does not, we don't.
Correct.
Okay. So that's where we're at with that. We have Paul Sterrett, town engineer, as well as Joe Janowitz, the town planner with us this evening as well.
And Jeff will be here later in the evening to discuss some topics.
Yeah, to discuss some topics that come up later in the agenda. As always, we start with open forum. So we'd like to go to town staff. Paul, do you have something for open forum?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Paul Sterrett, town engineer. I don't get the chance to put this on the record otherwise, but I wanted to go out of the way and say tonight how grateful the engineering department is for the workforce that has been in Westford over this last construction season. Back in March, Jeremy and I, the assistant town engineer, were concerned that we were going to get overwhelmed. We had set up all these 53G accounts to cover inspections. But the contractors that we've had in town on our three major projects, in particular, Mike Genetti, Genetti and Construction, and Mark Farmer did Clover Leaf, and who am I leaving out, Colonel Rawls?
Patriot Excavation.
Yeah, Patriot Excavation. Did beyond the usual to coordinate inspections with us, cooperated with us. Not that we didn't go toe-to-toe here and there, that's obligatory. But they just did a phenomenal job, and I wanted the planning board to know that we had a great construction season and a lot of good work was accomplished, which is what you get when you build premium homes in Westford. But, and my personal thanks to all of those people in the field.
Great, well, thank you for that, Paul. Joe, anything for open forum?
Just a couple items. One, if anybody is here for the Colonel Rawls project, I believe they're going to be requesting to continue to the next meeting on the 19th. And then the representative for 73 Brookside is caught in traffic. So what we're going to try to do, if you're okay with that, Mr. Chairman, is go through some general business items before getting into that public hearing item to give them an opportunity to get here.
Does that make sense? Okay, great. Anything from the board for open forum?
Nope.
All right, okay. Jeff, welcome.
Thank you.
Already introduced you. Anything for open forum this evening?
No, sir, not for me.
Awesome, okay, thank you. Anything from the audience for open forum this evening before we start? Okay. Well, since the applicant's not with us for the public hearing topic, we'll move forward to general business. And I guess we'll start with item A, which is PB 2134, Providence Road lots two and three, now H.R. Adams Way. Requesting for a minor modification of the common driveway special permit. Good evening.
Good evening, Mark Slager from Allen Engineering, here on behalf of the Adams family realty. We've been through this project several times now. I believe there's a draft decision basically for the stormwater permit and an amendment to the common driveway special permit, which needed to be amended to show the revised tree line and limited work that was shown on the stormwater permit. That's where we are.
Okay. Joe, anything from town staff?
Nothing else. At this point, Mr. Chairman, you have a draft decision. I don't know if there are any comments or concerns about what's in there, but we just try to capture, you know, it is it after the facts, stormwater management permit. There were some comments from engineering, but I think they've largely been addressed. But Paul is here, if there are any questions.
Yep, nothing of concern from the engineering department.
Oh, great. Okay, well, given that, let's go to the board. Darren, do you have anything on PB 2134?
Nope, so the comments, looks good. I'm actually pleased that you're saving some of those trees in there and moved the driveway a little bit, so that's good.
Great, all set. Thanks, Mike.
Again, thanks for moving the driveway to save a few maples. I assume you looked at it, and it was a common agreement that that's the best thing to do.
Technically, a switcheroo.
Switcheroo. So I just, the Board of Health just had a comment about local septic setbacks. So I don't know if there was any, anything about that.
The setbacks were pertaining to the dry wells that we had for the roof drains.
Oh, okay.
Those have been eliminated from the plan.
Okay, because it said well and infiltration, so that was just for those, okay. And need for easements around a grass basin, there was something mentioned? Marine house footprints and stuff. You, engineering?
There's a low area on the end of the driveway that's enclosed within the common driveway easement itself. That's the only one that I envisioned being jointly maintained. The other one is on Lot 3, which is on the right-hand side, and we anticipate that would be maintained only by the owner of Lot 3, since it's collecting runoff from Lot 3.
Okay, yeah, makes sense, okay, thank you.
Great. Yep, and I was appreciative as well, thank you for moving the driveway to accommodate the trees. Joe, just a little question here. We have a draft decision for the stormwater management permit, but are we, do you need us to take specific action on the minor modification of the common driveway special?
We should have a vote on that as well. When the board finds that, you know, this overall change, you know, the shift in the limit of work and the additional tree clearing is a minor modification to the... Sorry. We should have a vote, you know, when the board agrees that it's a minor modification, that the change in the limit of work that you see, the additional tree clearing, when it's a minor modification to the previously approved common driveway special permit.
So we'll have to, we'll just have to take a simple vote on that. Well, I'm just going to see if, is there anybody in the audience here to speak to Providence Road lots two and three? Okay, seeing none.
I move that we determine that the modification of the common driveway special permit is a minor modification in PB 2134 SP to allow for the revised limit of tree clearing.
Second. Motion in a second to find the changes to the common driveway for PB 2134 to be a minor modification. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great.
I move that we vote to approve PB 2134, the stormwater management permit application for lots two and three, now H.R. Adams Way.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the stormwater management permit for PB 2134. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, that takes care of general business topics A and B. We'll move on to item C. You know when the applicant will arrive, so you'll let me know, Joe, when we can go back to the general business? I'm sorry, the public hearing, thanks. Okay, so, people are coming and going. All right, general business topic C is PB 1707, some approvals for Spalding Hill Estate.
Good evening, Mark Slager from Allen Engineering. Here with me is Dave Guthrie from Spalding Hill Homes, Inc. Several weeks ago, we submitted Form Gs and requests for lot releases. In the meantime, we've submitted interim as-built plans. We've had a little bit of back and forth with the engineering department to clarify some items. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Paul, so he can give his review of where we are.
And seeing Mr. Guthrie here reminds me, I overlooked in my open forum comments one of the bigger contractors, Cataldo, doing work in town as well. I would be remiss if I didn't mention Joe, and the great job his team has been doing out at Spalding Hill.
Great.
We, so we did, and the time crunch is always on this time of year for the engineering department, as well as for developers and contractors. Everybody trying to get as much done as possible in those waning days of the season. So we did get a late submission, or a submission that was on the later side from Mark, but we were able to team up with them and come up with some number adjustments that make us feel comfortable. So I think we had said, based on the remedial work that has to done, and that was, that was the challenge, is we had to come up with some numbers that aren't necessarily on the Form G, but we're inflated enough, I think, to make us feel comfortable. And it was about $5,000 in addition to the $132,275.24 on St. James Way, specifically to remediate a pipe in a catch basin. And then on St. Paul's Way, a little bit more remedial work there. We thought $25,000 added to the $605,957.32 figure would give us a level of confidence that if something were to unanticipate were to happen, that would be sufficient funds for the town to behold. And Mark is more, is familiar with the specifics, but those were the two figures that we wanted to add to St. James, the emergency access road, and St. Paul, the actual subdivision road. If I'm representing what we had talked about.
So that would be, just so that I'm clear, that's $30,000 additional on top of the $203,294.89 that's in Form G now, is that?
No, it's a 605 number.
605, there's a $25,000.
I apologize, yep. Oh, that's the 15% hold, I'm sorry. So 30,000 above the 605 number.
25,000 above the 605, and 5,000 above the 132 number.
Okay.
Thank you.
What's confusing, I think, is you have four Form Gs. There are two there that just establish your retainage, so they account for everything that pretend, nothing was done, those set your retainage, and then there are two, one for St. James and one for St. Paul, that account for the work that is done. And those numbers, the 132, I believe, for St. James, we're going to add five to that. And the 605 for St. Paul, we're going to add 25 to that.
Correct.
So we have to vote on each of them separately, or can we do them together?
I would recommend doing them separately, but your pleasure.
Okay. See, you're to add, you only have to add 5,000.
Yeah, whatever your protocol.
And ultimately, not until we get...
37, 2, yeah, 137, 275, 24, and then 639, 57, 32?
Yep.
And then ultimately, they'll be reduced to writing in a Form G that Mark will circulate, and then we can all sign.
So the St. Paul's Way is going to go to 639, 57?
57, 32, yeah. And the other one is 137, 235?
Gotcha.
Two, I'm sorry, 137, 275, 24.
Gotcha, okay, great.
Okay. We're good.
137.
Great.
With that, we are also requesting a release of lots 1 through 7, and 25, 26, and 27 from the covenant.
Gotcha. And Paul, that's fine for you?
Yes, yep.
What about the tri-party agreement? Do we have to have that signed before we can release?
So we'll have to have that updated with the revised numbers. We'll have to have the tri-party update with the revised numbers. But once we get that, then we'll be able to provide it to you for signature.
I guess our request would be that you vote contingent on staff receiving the modified Form Gs and the tri-party to reflect the Form G amount.
Any concerns on that from your side, Joe?
No, we had to do a similar thing with Diane Lane when the number actually came down. We just had the numbers revised and then...
I just want to make sure when we do the vote that it's done properly, that we have everything we need to do it right.
All right. Well, is there any discussion from the board? Anybody have any comments? Nope. And we'll just do a check of the audience. Anybody in the audience here to discuss Spalding Hill? Seeing none, so, yeah, let's go.
All right, so for PB 1707, Spalding Hill Estates, I move that we approve the Form G for St. James Way in the amount of 137, 275.24.
Second. Motion in a second to approve Form G for St. James Way. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great.
I move under PB 1707, Spalding Hill Estates, we vote to approve St. Paul Lane Form G in the amount of $630,957.32.
Second. Second. Motion in a second to approve the Form G for St. Paul Way. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I move that, I move that we, under PB 1707, release lots 1 through 7, and lots 25 through 27 from the covenant. Release the covenant on those lots.
Contingent.
Contingent upon the tri-party agreement being signed when the revised Form G numbers are added, friendly men.
Second, as amended.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. I may have missed something, but do we, did we get a vote yet to actually accept the tri-party? So we approved the Form Gs, and you approved the release of the lots, but did you take a vote yet to actually establish the security in the revised amount tonight?
No.
I think we...
Because it's one of the three methodologies that you can accept, right?
Right, but so far, they set the amount, and you're proposing a tri-party.
Yes, and you have to vote to accept a tri-party.
And you asked, and got the vote on the release contingent upon the establishment of the security, but you didn't actually vote to establish the security.
Thank you.
I move that, under PB 1707, we establish a performance bond in a manner as allowed by the statute.
Second.
Right, there's three ways.
Or as a tri-party agreement?
We are proposing the tri-party.
Tri-party agreement?
And the revised amounts tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you. Second, yep.
Motion in a second to establish a tri-party agreement with the revised amounts from this evening. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Clarification, Mr. Moore, second.
All right. Strong progress through the general business.
Do you want to do D, or do you already continue?
All right. That brings us to item D under general business, which is PB 2024, Colonel Rawls' drive requests. We'll be doing the same thing we just did for Spalding Hill.
No.
No, we won't actually. Yeah, let's continue that to the 19th. Paul and Jeremy haven't had enough time to go through it in as much detail as they would like. So we're giving them a little bit more time.
Great. Is there a motion to continue this general business topic to December 19th here, meeting room 201, at 7:00 p.m.?
So moved, second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, really flying now. Which brings us to item E, which is PB 1924, 21 and 23 Carlisle Road, Balsam Circle, request for minor modifications to remove some additional trees. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. My name is Chris Perkins, I'm a retired civil engineer, and I've been living at Balsam Circle for about a year and a half now. We were the fourth people to move in, been through all the construction. You guys have been very helpful, and I want to thank Joe, you've been super. Joe McNath-Salem came out when I announced the project. They walked me through the process of getting here, so thank you very much.
Great.
I think that the paper I submitted in advance of the meeting kind of explained the general project. I want to give a little background of how we got here. I'm a current board member, but this project isn't being presented by the board. It's a private contract. I represent myself and 11 other homes in the development. Because it's such a young development, the HOA kitty hasn't had a chance to build up. And frankly, our snow budget was a little blown out of the water last year. So we don't have the kitty to take care of the problem that is being presented, i.e. the trees are very dangerously hanging over a lot of the people's homes. It simply started with myself and my neighbor saying to the builder, would you take that tree down? He said no. He didn't want to rock the boat with the board. The site still hasn't been accepted, he's got a lot of things he's got to do, so that was a no-go. So we said, what if we were to take on a project? And we started inquiring with a couple of tree services, and actually had Marquee Tree Service give us the best deal. What started out as myself and my neighbor saying, we're really worried about these trees hanging over our house, went site-wide when they found out we were interested in doing that. And as you see, a total of 12, including several dead trees, a dead tree that's been hit by lightning and is split from the top all the way down to the bottom, and just a number of trees that overhang. I wasn't here before the site was developed, so I don't know how open it was. But by all appearances, a lot of the trees are leaning in toward what would have been the light of the farm. And frankly, they're extremely close to the units. And even though from the back count in the basement, it's a three-story structure, these trees tower over the top of the roofs of these units. And there's a lot of anxiety, frankly, among some of the residents. And so we're just here to, at Joe's suggestion, to talk about, I guess, a minor alteration to the site. And what I want to make clear is, every single one of those people is concerned enough to take money out of their own pocket and put it toward this contract. And the HOA is not involved at all. So that's what I'm here for. A lot of pictures, a lot of the trees are, as we found out, either at or slightly inside the 100-foot buffer zone to the wetland back there. And unfortunately, because of the bad drought we've had, the wetland is actually dry right now. And so it would be a really good time of year with the frozen ground. We're probably going to do this in January, if we get the okay. All of the trees are going to be craned over the houses, so there's not going to be a piece of equipment anywhere near the backyards. And frankly, you can see the maintenance problem we have. And it's not for lack of maintenance. We clean the gutters three times a year, and it's not enough. It's just, it's just continuous, unfortunately. And so that's, really, I don't need to take up a lot of your time. If you have questions for me, I'm happy to entertain them.
Great. So, Joe, just before we go to the board for comments procedurally here, the ones that are inside the wetland, I mean, have you been in front of conservation yet?
That's on the 14th of December. So I put together a request for determination. Have all the paperwork. I'll be presenting on the 14th.
So any action we take this evening would be contingent on their decision anyway, right?
Correct.
If someone's inside the wetland area.
Correct. And just to clarify too, I know that the landowner to our western border is Rob Anstall, who is the trustee for that strip of land that they kept. And I have been and met with him on the project and went over it and left him the paperwork, and he's a supporter of the project.
Great. It's good to know. Okay, great. Kate, would you like to lead us off?
I was just wondering for engineering and for stormwater and such, the effect of removing these.
It'd be, it'd be nice to hear from the designer, I mean, the changing of the curve number by removing trees. I don't, I can't tell from looking at the pictures, you know, if it has an impact. It would be nice to get that, but the developer's not participating in this activity, so... I don't care to comment otherwise.
Okay, yeah, because...
Can I add, as long as it's along the same lines of impact of the wetland? We're going to leave all the stumps, and those are, I guess, called snags. That official term, Joe.
I don't know.
Conservation Commission knows. So the stumps are going to be left in place, and the... Engineer can back me up on this. All of the migration of surface water to that wetland area is introduced underground through leaching chambers, and supplies that well-in completely, for the most part, without any surface contribution.
So there's no, there's no drain system?
There are, there are some outfalls that end right where the trees are. But for the most part, there's several leaching basins back there. All the roof drains, right to the leaching basins. There's subsurface gravel-filled chambers. So the whole, the whole site, everything from the roofs all the way through the streets pretty much goes into the chambers.
I get, like Paul, looking at the pictures, I, some of them, you can see, yeah, that tree's really close to the porch, the back porch and things like that. I haven't had the opportunity to drive down there today to see it, but...
If you do, the trees are all marked, if you have the time.
Yeah, but I can appreciate it just because they are tall pines, and being the ones at the edge, they're the most unstable. I agree, we'd have, any vote would have to be contingent on the Conservation Commission, if they're mostly in the wetlands. As for the gutters, you might want to install leaf guards, leaf shields.
It's on our list of down the road, if we can afford it, yes.
Because cutting them back just for cleaning out your gutters is, I don't think, a good reason, but for safety.
We had them cleaned three weeks ago, and the contractor that we hired, if you look at that map again, the entire even side of the road, which is the side where hardly any trees are big, taken down, nothing to do. He just looked at them, they were clean. This side of the road, he spent all day there, and he just...
I appreciate it, I have pine trees around my gutters, too. So...
Yep, the other thing, I guess it's more for the Conservation Commission, but these trees are domineering the environment below it to the point where a lot of natural species would grow if given the chance. There are birch trees, there are oak trees, there are maple trees, there's a lot of small vegetative bushes. They're just not getting a chance if these trees are... I actually think we'd have a denser forested area.
Perhaps.
I'm just conjecturing.
I mean, you're only getting the ones on the edge, so you'll have...
Just the edge, just the edge, yes.
So you'll have, you'll have, maybe you'll have some birches on the edge. But, yeah, other than that, my main thing is what the Conservation Commission has for opinions.
Sure. Great, Mike?
So has the developer turned the, sold over to the association yet, or is he still?
He has. We had a official vote for the board on the 10th of November.
So the board has voted on it?
So yes, I'm a member of the board as of the 10th.
Then I'm fine with it, that's all I had.
So did you, did you ask if the board voted to approve the private...
We're on general business.
Cutting of those trees?
Thank you.
Number E.
The board has been actually hand-in-hand with us, because, as you can imagine, the site is rather tight. We're going to have a big crane, a big chipper, and there's one way in, one way out. And so we've been telling everybody, keeping them up to date, that there might be traffic impacts for a day or two. And we found that because of the number of trees, Marquee Tree Service gave us probably the best rate, because they gave it to us as a full-day rate. So you pay for the whole day, and they do everything they can. And they give us an individual tree rate. And if we can do it in two full days, then we've saved everybody who's taken money out of their pocket a little bit of money.
Great.
Yeah, I have no issues with it, just contingent upon what, you know, conservation says.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm in the same boat, in that, you know, I think, I've told this story in this room a couple times. I mean, I moved into a house that had had a significant amount of tree clearing, and we saw a tremendous amount of, you know, tree drop on the perimeter, you know, from winds hitting them from a different angle and whatever. So I agree with Kate. I mean, the maintenance effect is not a reason to do this, the safety angle is. So as long as Conservation is okay with it, I don't have a reason to say, you know, no to, you know, people taking action to protect their homes, so... Okay, so Bob, I think it makes sense to kind of bring you up to speed on where we are. So for those who are watching or who are in the audience, so Bob Schaffer has called in. Bob, the applicant for general, for the, I'm sorry, for the public hearing topic isn't here yet, so we moved on to general business, and we're on item E, which is the Balsam Circle request for some removal of trees.
Thank you, got you.
Did you have any comments before? I think we're pretty close to taking a vote here, so if you would like to offer some comments on general business, E, now's the time.
No, I did not. I mean, I understand the concern. Obviously, if we follow the rules, I'm fine with that, with the 20 trees. But we obviously just have to follow the rules with respect to conservation, so I'm good.
So I guess, yeah, I mean, I guess we can ask anyone in the audience here who would like to comment on PB 1924 Balsam Circle for removing some additional trees. No one?
A move that we find in PB 1924, the request to remove additional trees as minor and allow that work to go forward, subject to conservation.
Approved by the conservation.
Yeah, conservation, yeah.
Second. Motion and a second, as stated. All those in favor say aye. This has to be roll call now. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Uh, Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Can I say aye? Good luck with conservation.
I have a question about balsam circle, because there was something else, a request.
So that was some information for you, just to keep you aware of where they are at in terms of closing out their project, where they are in their, you know, in the as-built conditions. There are still some items to address with engineering, but we wanted to keep you, you know, informed as to what.
But there was a request to, to change our approval.
So one thing that they will be, when they address, you know, engineering's other concerns, is the removal of the Bachi Court Community Garden area, because from what it sounds like, the, the homeowners association was not interested in having that. They prefer it just to be loam and seed.
As, as a board member, I can tell you that all three members of the board signed Scott Clark's letter saying that we agreed to take the Bachi Court out and take a credit, a dollar credit.
So that will also have to go before the ZBA, correct? Because that was part of the ZBA agreement approval for the project.
We could certainly look into that and if it needs to go in front of ZBA, we will have it do that.
I don't recall. I mean, I know they were the high-level use, but we, if it requires an administrative trip to zoning board, we can certainly do that. If it does, it may not.
Just make sure.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just wondering about that.
Good luck with conservation.
And the trees?
And the trees, yeah, more importantly. Are we?
I'm waiting for you to come back to remove some more.
We're still in general business.
Someday we will, but hopefully not soon.
Okay. Uh, we've completed general business topic E. We're on to general business topic F. Um, do we want to get into F or should we? Yeah. F could take us a little while.
Yeah. Bob, just so you know, number D, Colonel Rolls Drive, they are, they weren't ready for a vote yet, so we continued that to next meeting.
Thank you.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, looking at what's left. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. So Brookside Road applicant isn't here yet?
No.
Not yet.
How about G? That won't take long, will it?
Did you want to text or reach out and see how close they are? Um, we could tackle G.
I don't know. It's up to.
Well, you know what? We're here. Let's just go with F. I mean, we're here. Yeah, we're here.
We can always continue.
We're moving on to general business topic F, which is a discussion and recommendations regarding the town's MBTA Communities Draft Action Plan. So before we dive into this topic, Jeff, I just want to make sure that, because I understand, we've been receiving from town staff that there's correspondence now coming in from interested residents, as there should be. This is a very significant topic for the town to be tackling, so people should be paying attention. But all we're trying to do here now is establish essentially, what we're on the hook to deliver to the state is simply a plan of action. These parcels that we will be looking at in the documents that, that the town staff has put together and they're very good, by the way. This is all just, this is all just essentially preliminary areas that we believe are worth exploring further, getting into, and perhaps will be become part of the final plan, which will be acted upon at town meeting.
That is correct, sir.
Great.
Doesn't commit us to anything and it's just a high-level plan to show that we're thinking about it.
Yeah. Fantastic. So with that, let's take it away.
Sure, thank you. So as you recall, at your November fifth meeting, or seventh, I believe, we provided an initial overview. We gave you the latest final guidelines from the state. We are required to have a multi-family zoning district in place by the end of 2024. That allows a density of 15 units per acre. We did suggest some initial properties for the board's consideration. We got some comments. We added, as you'll see, and if people are here in the audience, I actually have some maps for handout if it's easier. Feel free. We did add another category that says parcels warranting further evaluation. So we heard some thoughts from you and some of the few who commented about some other properties along Littleton Road, closer to the Chelmsford side. We heard about Liberty Way. We did add the other hotel property as well as 210 Littleton Road. And so we do think this represents a good starting point, certainly for a high-level action plan. And we're hoping to get your feedback tonight and see if this board might be in a position to make a recommendation for a draft action plan to go to the select board so that we can give them time to review it and meet our deadline of the end of January. So again, really can't screw things up too badly yet because we're not bound by any of this.
Right.
So that's the good thing. That being said, we want to come out of the gate strong.
Got it.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Well, I guess you need some feedback from the board and then maybe we'll go to the audience, see if people have comments, and then we will give you some direction.
Appreciate it.
Awesome. Bob, do you have any comments for Jeff regarding the MBTA Communities Draft Action Plan?
I do not. I'm fine. Thank you.
Great. Kate?
Has it been modified since you provided it to us a month or so ago?
Yes.
Yep, it's been updated.
So the map has been updated to reflect what we thought were comments. We also further refined some of the comments, I think under non-housing characteristics that might be important. It wasn't as responsive to the actual question. We had a lot of information there. We tried to simplify it, distill it into clearer thoughts that were more on point to what they were actually asking than more information.
I liked a lot of the ones with question marks. A lot of the non-housing ones seemed to be housing-related, but oh, well.
I know, but. And.
So, so I appreciate the detailed comments we got from people. So they aren't necessarily things that go into this. Those are things we can consider when we're actually working on the Overlake District and such.
I believe that to be true. And one thing I forgot to mention, I apologize, is we keep getting comments or questions about things that people would like to see. A lot of them are things that we cannot, they explicitly say we cannot require. So I have been approached by folks that would like to see an age-restricted development. I have been approached by people that want to have sustainability elements or buildings built to higher sustainability than can be required under code. And so what I suggest is, I think it would be appropriate to require a 10% affordability requirement. We are allowed to do that. And I think that gives an opportunity, one, to protect our subsidized housing inventory for affordable units. But I also think it provides some leverage, for lack of a better word. If there are projects or features or elements that the planning board say would be worthwhile and good for the community, I think it's fair to say maybe you folks should have the authority to either waive or reduce some of that affordability requirement if you think the town is getting a project or something that you cannot require, but that you think the town would ultimately benefit from. So I think that's, could be a simple but creative way to get some of the features that we can't really ask or require at this time, so. It doesn't belong in the action plan.
Okay. So very, the very fine, is, is that one of the ones that got added? That's the one across from the Regency, correct?
The old very fine, that's.
The old very fine, yeah.
That was raised at that meeting, yeah.
And, and on the second page is the hotel you were talking about that you added.
Correct. Bob had mentioned that at that meeting.
Okay.
I think it was also mentioned Liberty Way, so we added that third category. And we also added, I think the planning board might have mentioned it or someone did, and we certainly received comments about it, about other properties, particularly near the Chelmsford line. So we thought it made sense to at least include that in the conversation as warranting further evaluation.
Okay. And we could down the road, if we thought it was worth it, add more of Robbins Road if that seemed one of those other ones worth pursuing.
Uh, adding Robbins Road?
Well, the other buildings on Robbins Road.
So they're actually Robbins Road.
Two and four, one and, one, two, four.
So Robbins Road is currently in.
Oh, sorry.
It's in. So the magenta outline represents tentatively what the overall district would be. The green parcels represent those that might warrant special consideration for including the parcels, so.
Okay. My fault.
We didn't clearly communicate it.
And again, just to knit on the timeline page, on the lower-left box, the correct date is March 15th, 2024. And so, no, so, and then I guess there, there was one page that had your proposed timeline that you're going to fill out. There, there wasn't anything in, or, or was that, were you replacing what they had in their form with that?
Yeah, we were going to use that as an attachment if we could, because there's more.
More detail than what they're, yeah.
Yeah. And it's still certainly open, subject to change, but.
All righty. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you. No, I think it's, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Mike?
Um, I don't have anything else to add. I think they're doing a great job. I would definitely recommend them moving forward to bring this to plan, to the select board.
Thanks, Mike. Darren?
Yeah, likewise. I appreciate you guys adding the properties we talked about last time and it looks great.
I agree. I echo the sentiments. I also thought it was great the way that you sort of tied in the work that's already been done regarding the accessory dwelling unit modifications to the, to the bylaws. That was a good call out and I think it's directly related to the topic, so it was nice to highlight that.
Some of the good work you folks have already done.
And, and you folks, so. All right. So before we take action and recommend for the select board, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on the town's MBTA Communities Draft Action Plan? Okay. Uh, great. So then there, is there a motion to recommend?
A move that we recommend the town's MBTA Communities Draft Action Plan to the select board.
Second.
Motion and a second to recommend the town's MBTA Communities Draft Action Plan to the select board for hearing and approval. All those in favor say aye. Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we do have the representative here now for 72 Brookside.
All right. So we will pull out of the general business topics and we'll move into the public hearing items. So this is PB 2224, Site Plan Review, Stormwater Management Permit for 73 Brookside Road. Is there a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice?
Second.
Motion and a second to waive the reading of the public hearing notice for PB 2224. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Can I say aye? Is there a motion to open the public hearing for PB 2224?
Second.
Motion and a second to open PB 2224. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Damian Demetrius with Conoco Engineers and Scientists at Bridgewater, Massachusetts. Here on behalf of Magd Mikhail, the owner of 73 Brookside Road, here to present for the Willows, a pizza place that had previously become uninhabitable or demolished, caught on fire. And we're trying to renovate it and come back with, you know, a better-looking building, a, a, a larger building and still maintain the same footprint of the, you know, impacts for the site previously. There is an existing septic system on the site that, you know, is more than adequate for the size of the, for the existing building and the proposed building. We're trying to tie into that. You know, most of the design plan here was to reduce impacts, you know, reduce the amount of impervious on-site and, you know, allow for a greater function and usability of the lot that can, you know, add to Westbury. I think some of the most important things to recognize when going through this project, if we can go to the existing condition sheet, um, or I think actually maybe the demolish, demolish site, is the location of existing pavement that is located on the site. I think the cross or the diagonal hatching, you know, in, you know, either direction shows the location of the existing pavement. And then the reduced pavement is the diagonal from top right to down left. So it's, so you can see that there is a, a reduction in the amount of pavement that will be shown on-site for this project. You know, we're still able to meet the parking requirements associated with the town zoning bylaws. We are having issue, or we are going in front of the zoning board for a variance related to the proximity to the property line for, and multiple locations, you know, that corner that's being highlighted there, along the front setback, and then even the side setback where there's the weird juxtaposed piece of property that comes onto the site. I think that's the right use of the word there, in which crosses the railroad from the stream. So we're trying to get through the zoning board with those variances. We've gone to the Conservation Commission. The entire site is within Riverfront, associated with Gilson Brook. So, you know, reducing the impacts to existing, you know, vegetation, tree lines and everything to that extent is, you know, really important to the project. Is, you know, maintaining those existing, you know, impacts of pavement grading and all of that are a major concern, you know, or a major part of the design of this project. You know, it, it's what we're trying to reduce. The only real clearing of trees is in the back there, as, as shown on the screen, for a retention basin that is required. Per the town bylaws, we have to retain a certain amount of stormwater on the site. It is just a small, shallow retention basin, I call it specifically, because it, it only retains water in that area. So we've received a bunch of comments from the town, you know, from the different sectors, the Board of Health, the, you know, Conservation Commission, the Fire Department. We are waiting to hear back from the Engineering Department if there are any comments. So we do expect a continuance with this and we, you know, just want to come in here, get this board's opinions, thoughts, see if there's anything in particular that, you know, there is confusion on or if you'd like to see specifically. And, you know, kind of open it up to questions and see, see how you guys feel about it.
Great. Thank you for that. Joe, any comments from town staff before we go to the board and get comments?
Uh, nothing else other than what's been in the staff report. You know, the Fire Department had some questions about site circulation. I think during the zoning board as well, they had some questions about trash pickup, snow storage on the site. So we're, we're happy to get the board's feedback and we anticipate Engineering Department will have some feedback soon as well.
Sure. All right. Great. Well, with that, let's go to the board. Darren, would you like to lead us off?
Sure. Yeah, I think the site could benefit from some updated engineering and water flow and so forth. And I think also the traffic flow on the site as well. I think it kind of became a mishmash over time. So I think those are going to be benefits, I think, to the site, so look forward to seeing more.
Thanks, Darren. Mike?
Yeah, I agree with, with Darren. It's crazy, the property line, how it crosses over the tracks there.
Yes. So, I mean, would you like to?
No, I'm just, it's just.
Input on it?
Yeah, I'm just.
Yeah. So, so our current belief or thought is that the property itself and the deed is based off of the center line of the stream. And this is per my discussions with the PLS. So the, the deed references the center line of the stream, unless moved by unnatural, or as it moves with natural conditions. Our thought is that during the construction of the railroad, they filled in that area. And what we're having is that that, you know, part of the property, you know, was then, you know, per our reference plan, it's H.J. Fletcher Companies, I think, or J.H. Fletcher, that owns the parcel. We are unsure, we are, been unable to track down the current owner. The GIS system's actually handed over to the property across the stream. But the deed on that plan references the same center line of the stream. So, you know, we are currently that owner. So, um, you know, we are, eh, eh, currently, that owner is, you know, unknown. So, i- it is, it's a weird situation where the existing, uh, pavement crosses, uh, you know, uh, onto that property. Um, you know, there, there is parts of the railroad, you know, that, uh, are associated with that, um, so, we're currently just gonna move, you know, our edge of pavement off of that, you know, and so, rather than trying to deal with, you know, getting certain permissions or any of that, that small snippet of pavement will just, you know, remain to be degraded in time.
Interesting, yep, no, I, I think it looks great, I'm glad to see something being done over there.
Awesome.
Kate?
Nope, I didn't, um, really have any comments, the only thing was, uh, if the restaurant is gonna be open after dark. Given the number of seedings, since we don't, I don't really have any information on parking seating size and all that. If you might need to have some lights in the parking area as well as on the building.
Yeah, eh, eh, there will be, uh, lighting on the building, you know, some outside lighting there, and we can show that in greater depth, um, you know, if, if the board would look for that, you know, some, you know, uh, locations for some lamp posts or something like that, we'll, we'll, we'll get some further information, uh, if the board would need some.
Yeah, the packet says you're gonna have it on the building, I, I appreciate that, but the question is, are you gonna need additional poles?
Yeah, uh, there's, eh, you know, there is the street lighting that's out in front, and again, you know, the idea behind the design, not add any additional impacts, right? You know, keep it to, we have this existing patch of pavement, we had a pizza place that I, from my understanding, has been a town favorite, uh, up until, um, you know, it, it caught fire. Um, and they've just been trying to, you know, get it reestablished on-site, um, so, you know, adding additional lighting at the perimeter, you know, it could impact, you know, a butterlot, um, you know, with, you know, high up lamp posts, or, you know, y- you can always add, you know, certain things for, for safety, obviously, what we'll add as required.
So the plan is to make this something similar to what was there before and, and so, it won't have a lot of tables and stuff inside.
Yes, yeah, yeah, there, there will be tables, there will be seating, but, uh.
But, but not, eh, like a regular pizza place?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
It was like that before.
Alrighty. Got it, so the lighting might be a moot issue, okay, got it? How is it?
That's it? Awesome, uh, Bob, any comments?
Uh, yeah, I, I guess I'm, I agree with everything I've heard before, to date, um, I guess the one question I had was regarding the entrance and grading, because that's, my recollection, it's kind of a funky entrance, coming in there with the grade of the, the road as well as the grade coming down into the property. And just come understand if there's anything that's being done to, to alter that in any way.
Yeah, so I'm, if you go into the, uh, next, uh, down a page where we show kind of the grading and drainage there, we are smoothing out that transition there. We're extending that contour a little bit forward, just a minor amount of fill that's gonna occur, um, even, even as far as the, the construction of this going, we're currently proposing, we're not, you know, leaving the base course, you know, just pulling up the, um, existing bituminous concrete pavement course and relaying, you know, adjusting, fixing any holes in the, uh, base course. Any of the gravel that needs to be, you know, repaired, and then, um, you know, repaving the area and adding, you know, normalizing the contours in the grade to make it a little bit smoother. Um, but again, the idea is that the, you know, the grade, uh, pushes drainage towards the back of the site. We added a little gravel trench along the back edge to, you know, catch, uh, some sediment, you know, pea gravel, it's a minor stormwater feature, but it will, you know, help in some removal of pollutants, uh, prior, prior to going into the retention basin.
Gotcha. Bob, any, any other comments?
No, thank you.
Oh, okay, great, um, yeah, well, I'll echo the other board's comments, as a, a resident of Navnassett neighborhood, I would say, yeah, it's hard to imagine anything that would, further degrade the site from its current, uh, condition, so it, it'll be nice to see something better there. Um, yeah, I mean, it's hard to make a lot of comments without, you know, engineering having a chance to give us their feedback, and, and obviously, you're gonna have to talk to, um, Fire Department about, you know, their apparatus being able to make a full turn in and out of the lot, so, I think we'll probably have more questions for you after you're, you're through those processes with engineering and the Fire Department. Awesome, but it looks, looks good, uh, I like the fact you're taking away some pavement, that's definitely a good thing.
And not really extending it beyond what's there.
Yeah, more just normalizing, you know, adding actual parking lines, um, you know, bottling the neck of the entrance down a little bit, eh, you know.
I noticed that that's good, because it, it is kind of a sprawling entrance right now.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, make, eh, adding some more traffic kind of safety landscaping, uh, that kind of, you know, would just give it, you know, a little bit more of a cleaner, um, design, you know, ra- rather than just open driving.
Yeah. Great, yeah, but I don't have any further, uh, further comments. Um, okay, so, uh, go to the audience, is there anybody here tonight to, uh, speak to PB twenty-two twenty-four, seventy-three Brookside Road? Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Dylan, uh, Miriam Kedanski, twelve Brookside Road, Unit nineteen. Uh, the staff report mentions, as we all remember, that, um, the property was part of a court judgment many years ago. Between the zoning board, uh, the town and, uh, WVI Tower is now known as Everest. So my question is, do you guys still have that lease for a cell tower back there?
Actually, I don't, I don't think so, so that's, uh, it was long a time ago.
Can you tell me how you got rid of it then?
So, actually, I just like, when I bought it from the old owner, I just heard from her that they have, uh, they have a problem from the neighbors to, to get the cell tower, so, and I heard from her that, that's, it's all, it, it's not, eh, it's, it's not in the front of me, but I'm just heard from her. That they have, uh, a court for, for this ones, and till now, they didn't take it any decision. And from a neighbors, from a neighbors, uh, they live around, they said, uh, I don't think so, it's, it's, it's not gonna, eh, eh, it's, it's not gonna happen again in, in Brookside and seventy-five Brookside. I think it gonna be be, behind me and Fletcher Club, or it's Tony Brook, I think.
Well, well, the, the point is, when you bought the property, you also got the lease.
No, not from, not from me, that's, I think, that's who is doing it, the old owner, she has a lease with them.
Yes, but it, that lease went to you.
Jeff, do you have a comment here?
Uh, just for what it's worth, Mr. Chair, I did reach out very recently, uh, the, uh, company owner of Everest, uh, they are under the understanding that they still have a viable lease.
Yeah.
Certainly not their preferred site, but, uh, they believe they do have that, now, this is without benefit of counsel, but they believe they have that right.
Got it.
Yeah, I, I, I believe it's still in force, I mean, I'll contact you privately, if you guys got rid of it somehow, we would love to know how you did, so we could do it somewhere else. But my point is, um, that should they exercise their rights under the lease, they would need access through what I think is now parking and, did you say a drainage area? There was a, uh, 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 uh.
Well, I don't.
That one, yeah, I mean, the tower would be way off to the right there. So, so none of this affects the actual site of the possible tower, it's the access to get there, I would, it's just a point for you guys to consider. Because should it ever come back, you're gonna have a big, you're gonna have a problem there, because you'll have to have some kind of way to get back there.
But, and, anything to get site access back that would be part of a separate and revised action, you know what I mean, they could potentially modify the site plan to accommodate access.
Right, right, but I, but I'm su- I'm sure the lease says that you cannot do anything to endanger their use of the part that they have rented, so.
Okay, I gotta, gotta put that to you.
You got, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else from the audience here to speak to PB twenty-two twenty-four? Okay, uh, so, sounds like, um, we are continuing and you're, uh, willing to grant us an extension then, uh, to take action?
Yes.
Should've asked Paul before he left, do we think engineering will have a chance to look at this before the nineteenth, or are we gonna look at January?
I think actually we'd probably look at February sixth, because the ALCA will be going back from the zoning board on January eighteenth.
Okay.
We'd like the zoning board to take action first.
Okay.
Um, so I think by February sixth, that gets everybody through holidays, gives the ALCA opportunity, or, to hear from engineering, hear from fire, respond to comments, and hopefully have any issues addressed by then.
Got it, great, alright, is there a motion then to continue PB twenty-two twenty-four to our, you said February sixth?
February sixth, thanks.
Uh, meeting here, meeting room two oh one at seven PM.
Second.
Motion and a second to continue PB twenty-two twenty-four to February sixth, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
So the.
An extension.
The extension will be like till mid, end of February or something?
Yeah, late February.
Yeah, we can, we can tell the end of February.
Yeah, you'll work with town staff to grant the extension necessary to keep us hold, great. Thank you. Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And happy holidays, since we're gonna see you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nice to you.
Right. Okay, we're gonna jump back into our general business topics then, uh, and we've made such good progress, we're on item G, which is consider submitting ARPA requests for funding of planning studies. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so.
Saw your note.
Yeah, um, so there's a little more strings attached to ARPA funds than, uh, maybe some other funding sources for planning studies. Generally, the, the email I sent out, um, it highlights the, the use categories that you can try to make the argument that ARPA funds can fall into. So if we're just having a pot for planning studies at large for the community, it would be hard to make the argument that you can use ARPA funds for that. It seems, has to be more focused into one of these four use areas. Obviously, replacing lost public sector revenue, I don't think would apply, nor would, uh, premium pay for eligible workers. Um, so you, you try to be looking at maybe one of the two other items, items two and four. Uh, yeah, so, we try to provide, you know, an example of what, you know, maybe there could be a logical nexus for trying to apply for ARPA funds, and, um, if the board wanted to put a request in. Something like a sewer study, if you wanted to study for areas in the Granville neighborhood, just, eh, you know, by way of an example. Um, not necessarily saying the board is interested in that or not, but, uh, if there was something that was targeted towards something like water sewer broadband infrastructure, we could try to put something together for the select board, um, that being said, they are looking for, um, any ARPA requests to be in by the end of the day tomorrow for their December thirteenth, uh, meeting. So we would need to put something together from, you know, on behalf of the board for that, which we could do. Um, but we would also request that there be a member of the planning board to, to speak on it at the select board meeting, um, if that is the direction you wanna go. So you'd have to, you know, decide what you want it to be for, how much you wanna apply for, um, and then decide who's going to speak to the select board for it.
Got it. Thanks, Joe.
I, I, I read that link, I went to that link you provided us for their final rule overview, and it was not very helpful.
I mean, they tried to provide a number of examples, I think, where, you know, it would be ineligible use for their funding, um, you know, to your point, there isn't, you know, something that's very clear for, um, you know, just general planning studies that are better meant to the community, which you could think of it as benefiting economic development.
So I didn't know if somebody who has the time and inclination, maybe like town council, I don't know, who actually went and read the actual ruling, and where they actually provide the details on what's valid and what's not valid. It, because they have a, a category in there for things that aren't listed above, and, um, but they don't give any really good examples for things that aren't listed above. And so, I didn't know if something like the multi-housing thing that we're, plan that we're working on, because it is for helping affordability and, and housing, and, and, and it's also, I think, potentially helping small businesses and such. If somebody who's creative can make it fit.
So, we did secure a grant to get us a consultant to help us with this.
Excellent.
Which is good, um, it's certainly possible that if, I think as Joe mentioned, and again, there's a lot of things that are unclear here. It might be possible to target an area that could use some economic redevelopment that have barriers such as, you know, some infrastructure. But I think it's, I think it's, um, it'll be a challenge, but it doesn't mean we ca- we can't apply, it's just, I feel like right now, without some new information, it's, it's hard to make a logical ask.
I mean, you have a list of priority things that you're working on, and, and, and I can't see doing a make-work thing just because we have funds available, but, you know, if there's something.
Well, we, we've got the state mandate.
Yes.
Which we're thinking we have to do.
But, but I, but I'm just think, but, but can it, can it be shoehorned into this somehow?
I don't know, but at least we.
To help you with funding.
We did get a grant for seventy-five thousand.
Oh, good, that much?
To help with it.
Oh, wow, great.
Well, yeah, we were fortunate, um.
Well, so to that end, Jeff, given that we're talking about an overlay district along one-ten, and the town doesn't have things like a s, you know, a sewer system, and there are some questions, I think, that came up regarding water, I think I saw some comments from the public that asked, how are we gonna get enough, make sure that there's enough water for all these wells have been going dry?
Yeah.
Would it not make sense to tie a request for ARPA funds to this, specifically to do a study of the feasibility of putting sewerage along one-ten? And perhaps, you know, what could be done to expand wells, eh, you know, town wells to be able to support the water needed for this overlay district? It seems like a, I mean, tying the sewerage back to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, it's interesting, because if you believe like the, the sewer reports where they can tell how much, you know, COVID is in your neighborhood, Westford's a black box, because there is no sewerage here, so you can't really know, you're basing it off of Lake Lowell, and essentially, we're getting Chelmsford stats, which is fine.
So that's, yep, that's, that's, uh, that's a lot, so, uh, I don't have any good answers for you?
The only, the only question is, should we make an ARPA fund request tied to this MBTA Communities Act to look at sewerage along one-ten? I'll boil it down then.
So the question will then come up is, if you're talking about sewer, um, one question could be up and down one-ten, and you know, not for nothing, with the exception of the swimming tennis club, so far, sewer hasn't really impaired that, the development there, it could, it could.
They all do private.
They do, um, there are certain types of development that do not lend themselves well to on-site sewer, that need much more water, and, you know, there could be some biotech that would be a great thing to have, but we're, that is a barrier for us, um, for sure, um, I don't know, we would still ultimately have to probably tie in somewhere for something of significant flows. It could potentially help some neighborhoods where there might be limited opportunity, but I think, I don't think it's as, I'm not sure it's as simple as, hey, what are sewer options for one-ten, but I, I think it's part of a larger conversation, which is fine, I don't think that's anything that'll be ready for the current ask to the select board. But we can certainly reach out and look at water and sewer, um, the areas that we did propose, by the way, we did obviously check with our water department to make sure they believe there's adequate infrastructure to support the proposed locations of the district now, and it's not just where they have water system, but where they have adequate capacity. Um, so we did run this by, uh, Public Works for, for that, but sewer is a, is a separate question. And that might make sense, but I think it's a, I think it's a bigger ask than we're thinking.
Or, it might be maybe next year in one of the select board's funding request cycles.
Yeah.
When we're actually in, in the actual work phase of the.
Perhaps?
Yeah, I'm not aware of the history of sewerage in Westford and how much it's been explored or not, I'm sure there's a history there, but.
Oh, there's, 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 there's a history, um.
It was explored for the master plan, and nobody wanted it, because if you have sewer, then you don't need the one acre, you can have smaller housing lots and get more.
But at the end of the day, it does limit the businesses you can put into your technology areas, and I, I would, I would say, it hasn't limited development along one-ten. If you've gone to get a Starbucks in August, I would defy that it's not somewhat of a barrier.
But it does raise some interesting questions, but I don't think. But it does raise some interesting questions, but I don't think it's something we could do justice to in the very short term.
Yeah.
No, I mean, cause that's a, that's a good, good idea.
As a growing community, I mean, I feel like it is a logical topic to put on the table again at some point.
And then how to make the gray water available.
Sure.
For, for watering, you know, the lawns and stuff.
Right. I don't know, I think it's a long-term discussion, I think Chelmsford has run up against some-
Chelmsford's on the moratorium now, they can't add anymore.
To the sewer?
To the sewer, cause they've got a lot from Lowell.
Right.
So all new construction's now back on subject.
Is it?
Yeah.
Interesting, so, yeah.
They've got lowers at capacity, so, I mean, it's a big question, but it's a huge question, right? They own their own facility, on, you know, Nav Lake, you know, so.
Right, some people might advocate, it might make sense if you're gonna have some larger, small region facility, do you do it in strategic areas to save water quality? Others might say, you put it in other areas where they can't develop, because they don't have, um, the infrastructure, and it could open up economic development or redevelopment opportunities, that's not viable right now. But think of all the recharge we do in Westford, right? We put our water-
We're good.
Right back in the ground, instead of kicking it down straight.
Mer- mermaid, yep.
Yeah. That's green.
I'm on top of an aquifer, so I'm, I'm happy.
But no, it, it does raise some questions, I just think it's, it's a, it's after maybe tiered site plan review, commercial recreation, and the MBTA multifamily, and-
Yeah.
Part of the master plan.
Yeah, okay. I don't, we don't know what your request for a grant, what, what components of the, the workflow for this, what it entails, and what other parts of the workflow it doesn't entail.
Okay.
Can you tell us more about this grant?
Oh, that we can. So, we have seventy-five thousand dollars, um, we just got the contract with the state, finally. Um, so we will be beginning that process to try to, uh, seek a consultant. Uh, we believe, um, they're gonna help a lot with the public outreach process, we think it might be, um, important to have someone with some architecture services onboard, in case you folks feel there may be, um, some important design considerations. We do think, um, if we're really gonna try to make this work up and down Littleton Road, probably need to think about changing some of our dimensional zoning criteria, might need to think about, um, four stories, which in places are still gonna be consistent, but I think you need to think about your setbacks, I think you need to look at your open space requirements, I think you probably wanna try to put some of the pedestrian features more upfront, instead of where the parking usually is now, cause you really wanna try, try to make it more inviting and to connect to the other spaces nearby. Um, so it's kind of a big change from what has been there, and so now you have the challenge of how do we work that in long-term into maybe a larger area where it wasn't geared for that, so it's making the connections work, pedestrian-friendly, and really make it inviting and easy for people to imagine if they could walk to, I don't know, get a cup of coffee or something, without having to get into a car. So we wanna make those things happen, so.
With their dog?
Some people have dogs, I hear, so, uh, yeah.
Has the, um, I'm just curious, has the, uh, have the water commissioners and/or the water department, are they starting to get concerned about the higher density, cause I had a couple of years ago spoken, or la- a year or two ago, spoke with the previous, uh, head of the water department, and he had a big concern about the state reducing our draw limits.
Yes. So that is a concern, I'm not fully educated on that, it's a bit of an artificial barrier based on past usage, and they wanna try to put limitations on how much you can, despite what your physical capacity could be, they wanna put limitations on how much you draw. What I also do know, though, is that the former superintendent, now Public Works Director, they do greatly favor the multifamily developments, cause it's far more efficient, there's far less water usage per person, and it makes a lot of sense for them, and in some cases, it can actually help their numbers in that magic math system that they have going now. So, there are some advantages, um, certainly as compared to, you know, single-family detached dwellings that's on the municipal system, so.
Don't know if that helps.
It's good for dog pools to fill.
Yep.
It's true.
So I don't know if that helps, but, uh-
No, I, I'm just thinking that, that, that's gonna be a consideration when we get down into working out the details.
Yes.
Alright. Uh, Bob, any comments on, uh, general business G, uh, the ARPA funds?
Uh, not anymore, thank you.
Okay.
So it sounds like immediately there's nothing, and even longer term, maybe, but not likely.
Yeah, it's hard to say, particularly with ARPA anyway, just because all the funds have to be obligated by the end of next year, um, and then they all have to be spent by, eh, by the end of twenty-twenty-six.
Was it end of twenty-four, I thought it had to be, uh, obligated?
Correct. By the end of twenty-four, they have to be obligated, and then they have to be spent by the end of twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah, so we have two, so we have two years, yeah. Be interesting to see other towns, how they finagle things. That's all I had.
Alright. Great. Um, okay, if we're moving on from item G, uh, we are on to the review of draft minutes, uh, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two?
Ooh, second.
Motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes, uh, any discussion?
No.
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 Bob?
No.
Okay, uh, I was similarly, uh, good with him as well, um, okay, motion and a second to approve the November seventh meeting minutes, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Darren?
Aye.
And I will abstain, who's not there. Um, and with that, I see an updated, uh, meeting dates and deadlines, Joe?
Yep, just to reflect the, the January ninth meeting, we'll be here.
Oh, it will be, okay.
Great.
Yeah, we snatched the room while we could.
Outstanding, cool, that's very good. Uh, and, that's pretty much it, is there a motion to adjourn?
Ooh, second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Have a good evening.